All right, we'll start the evening's meeting, a rare Wednesday night council meeting, August 10th, 2022. We'll stand now and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Okay, moving forward, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Bierstedt.
Here.
Bjork.
Yep.
Carroll.
Here.
Downing.
Here.
Morsette.
Here.
Miller.
Bodine.
Here.
Okay. Next, we'll have the approval of the minutes from the July 26, 2020, meeting.
I move for approval.
Second.
Okay. First and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on. Mr. Downing, you have the bills.
Mr. Council President and Council, I move for approval of the bills in the amount of $2,223,828.59, subject to the comptroller.
Second. All right, we've got a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next, we'll have public comment. As Sterling said, if you would like to come up, make a public comment, we'd ask you to sign in and state your name and your address for the record. Just as another comment, public comment is a time for us to listen to the citizens. It's not an agendized time, so the council can take in your information. We can ask clarifying questions, but we really can't engage in any discussion. So please don't feel like we're ignoring you if you don't get any feedback from the council at this time. Anybody who want to make a public comment?
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Bodin. I live right around the corner on Clark Street here. I just wanted to make a comment to the council about fair housing for all. I just attended the School Board-Council Joint Session, which I want to thank you all for, I think most of you were there. That was a really good conversation, and I'm glad I have two kids still in the school district here, so I really appreciate all of that transparency and working together. However, I would also like to encourage you to discourage community development time, money, and staff resources continuing to be spent on the development, such as the proposed Racecourse Community east of town, as noted by Alec, I'm sorry, Alan Tuktenhagen at that meeting. I know I slaughtered his name, I'm sorry. Tuktenhagen, anyway.
Tuktenhagen.
Yeah. He acknowledged that Hudson has increased housing substantially and has still seen a decrease in their school enrollment. He cited an example of several hundred units that were built very near the Rivercrest Elementary School, and that only brought in 15 kids. So I think, again, it is very important that we remember that children are the future of this committee, community, of the school board, as well as the council. Many members noted that they were graduates of River Falls High School. So I think, again, the work that I would like to see community development focused on is maintaining fair housing for all. Scott Simpson did give us a great quote, not sure if the pun was intended or not, but he said that growth and development keeps the engine running in related to the city budget. And I really, again, appreciate the efforts that the city has put in conversation towards sustainability and responsible development, and I would really like to see that play out in practice. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else have a public comment?
My name's Don Leek. I live at 523 Birchcrest in River Falls. I've been a resident here for 39 years. I'm going to read mine because it'll go faster that way. This is about the land development project that Neil Kraszaniak described to an audience of 70 people on July 20th at the Unitarian Universalist Society of River Falls. You, all of you, have had a chance to view this recorded presentation in the subsequent Q and A session along with the concept plan map. Now, I know at the July 26 council meeting, it was emphasized that the city of River Falls has not received anything official about the 500-plus acre southeast of town that Kraszaniak spoke of at that meeting. Nevertheless, I think it's important that public record be made before this council of a couple of telling comments made by Neil about his development project, which now appears to have a name, River Falls Motorplex. During the meeting, Kraszaniak insisted more than once that his development was not a racetrack. Yet, the very first bit of advertising launched for the project is this image. I hope you can see it. Neil stated that he had multiple meetings with the city, DNR, and county to discuss all sensitive issues, and toward the end of the 20-minute presentation added, quote, "The meeting that we had with the city, with the county, with the DNR, we had a lot of good favor on our side. A lot of good favor on our side." This last statement is most troubling to me, as it indicates that Kraszaniak feels that he has been encouraged to proceed with an annexation petition. I am not in favor of Neil's racetrack project for numerous reasons, but chiefly because it does not meet any present need for the city, conflicts with the land's designation in the city of River Falls' future land use map, threatens a sensitive ecosystem, and does not fit the character of River Falls as I see it. I would not embrace this change. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else have a public comment? There's public hearings, so you'll have a chance to speak. All right, we'll move on from public comments, and we'll go into, first of all, we'll go into the public hearings, but before we move into public hearings, planner, city planner Emily Shively will give us an update or a presentation on the ordinance changes in front of us, items two through seven, I believe she is. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Ms. Shively.
Thank you. Good evening, Council President, Council. I'm Emily Shively, River Falls City Planner. And this evening, we're discussing several amendments to the zoning ordinance and city code related to parking, nuisances, rental uses, signage, and code enforcement.
Emily, can you get the mic closer? I think.
Yep.
Yep, maybe a little bit better? They can also speak louder if needed. All right, let's get started. As conditions change, it's beneficial to update the zoning ordinance and city codes to ensure that community goals continue to be met as new issues arise. In response to issues identified in a report to council in June of 2021, the city council directed staff to proceed with enhancing proactive code enforcement program over the next two years that includes more tools and resources to address emerging issues. Staff has been working over the past year with Larry Kirsh of Prolog Planning to evaluate existing city codes and identify best practices from other communities to determine appropriate ordinance changes. Staff has been operationalizing a new code enforcement manual to ensure that consistent processes and procedures are used to obtain code compliance. This evening, we're discussing several proposed amendments to the zoning code and city code to address five primary areas identified on the slide you're seeing now. Parking, public nuisances, and enforcement procedures were identified and directed by council in the 2021 council report. Changes to rental housing regulations are recommended by staff in response to the state of Wisconsin, reducing the city's authority regarding rental licensing and inspection programs, and it's one step that will assist in ensuring that the health and safety of the city's rental housing. Changes to the sign code have been added in response to issues related to the placement of signage in the city right-of-way. Proposed amendments are a response to current emerging issues that staff and community members have identified and that the city council has prioritized. The intent of the modifications is to provide clearer standards in these areas so that it's easier for everyone to understand the expectations and requirements to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community. They'll now discuss each amendment in a little greater detail. First, parking. It's been determined that the current ordinance does not adequately address a number of issues related to parking on residential properties. This has resulted in resident complaints and conflicts with utility location stormwater management. For example, there's no setback requirement stating how close to a property line you can pave a driveway or park or store a vehicle. This means that a resident could pave and/or park up to the property line, which doesn't necessarily leave enough room for utilities, stormwater, or snow storage, and may create encroachment issues with adjacent properties. There's also a need to specify that vehicles are to be parked on an improved surface, asphalt, concrete, brick, or other dust-free surface, and not on grass or another landscaped area. When vehicles are not parked on an appropriate surface, yards may become rutted, and erosion may occur, which negatively impacts the quality of our surface waters. The parking, location, and surfacing requirements also need to apply to parking and storage of recreational vehicles, boats, equipment trailers, et cetera. The proposed amendment would require that parking and driveways be located at least five feet from the property line and not within a drainage and utility easement. Sometimes easements along the property line are greater than five feet to accommodate specific utility and drainage requirements in an area, thus some properties may have a greater setback for parking and driveways. It's important to keep easement areas clear of any obstructions to allow for the installation and maintenance of utilities and for free-flowing drainage ways. A minimum setback of five feet also ensures that there's an area of separation between driveways and parking on adjacent properties to address potential encroachment or impact on a neighboring parcel. The proposed amendment also consolidates parking standards into one section of the code rather than multiple locations for ease of implementation. The Plan Commission reviewed all of the ordinances being presented tonight at their meeting on July 5th. There was quite a bit of discussion about this parking ordinance section, and as a result of that discussion, a few modifications have been recommended. Staff had initially recommended requiring that boats, RVs, and other equipment that is stored in a side or rear yard on residential property be screened from public view by an opaque fence or wall with gate access. The Plan Commission expressed concern that this would require significant investment by property owners that they may not be prepared to make. So staff has removed the screening requirement. However, we're still recommending that all vehicles be parked at least five feet from a side property line and on an improved surface, even if that is simply pavers under-the-wheel areas, to be consistent with other parking performance standards and to address common resident complaints. The ordinance package had also recommended that RVs, boats, and other equipment only be allowed to be parked on a driveway for 72 hours to limit obstructions in the front yard. The Plan Commission was also concerned about this restriction, so it has been removed. The current ordinance requires boats, RVs, and other equipment that is parked in the driveway and that hasn't moved for 30 days to be stored in an appropriate location. So staff is recommending that that provision remain in effect. The Plan Commission also recommended that a provision prohibiting RVs from backing into a parking space be removed for safety reasons, so that has been deleted. The intention was for the license plate and tabs to be visible. There is still a provision that a tarp or vehicle cover not obscured the license plate. Next, nuisances. This is one of the primary areas of city code where a lack of specificity has created challenges in communicating community expectations and addressing resident property maintenance complaints. The existing code is broad, and while it enumerates various conditions affecting health and safety, it fails to address some of the most common concerns related to inoperable vehicles and exterior storage of household items. The proposed code amendments would address maintenance of exterior property and premises with specific examples of what is considered inappropriate and hazardous to store openly in a yard, such as appliances, household garbage, televisions, things like that. The amendment also prohibits improper disposal or dumping of trash or moving it simply from one property to another. The parking standards that I just discussed are intended to address the parking and storage of vehicles in good working condition. However, one of the complaints staff receives are about inoperable vehicles that may not have current license tabs, are missing key components, have flat tires. If a property owner has a car that they're working on, they can have it on their property as long as it's stored in a garage or shed or screened with an opaque wall or fence and out of public view. The ordinance is intended to prohibit a proliferation of inoperable vehicles from taking up required parking spaces or becoming increasingly deteriorated and creating unsafe and unsafely conditions. Moving on to rental uses. Recent state law changes have impacted how cities are able to regulate and inspect rental properties. In the past, the city had an annual rental licensing and inspection program that allowed the building inspector to identify potential health and safety issues on a regular basis to ensure adequate maintenance and upkeep of rental properties. However, current law only allows cities to have a required inspection program in areas that are designated as lighted. Since the law changed, only a couple of cities in the state have designated light areas, and our staff continue to monitor the effects of the law in River Falls and other cities. It's still important to ensure basic habitability standards are met in all residential properties in the city. So the amendment adopts habitability violations enumerated in state statute. State law does allow the city to institute a residential rental registration program, and River Falls already has such a program in place. This ordinance amendment ensures that the regulations are compliant with state law, including the maximum registration fee that may be charged per building, which is $10. The code amendment incorporates the statutory definition of a habitability violation and outlines the complaint and enforcement procedures, as well as violations and penalties that the city is allowed to put in place under the law. The proposed code amendment also adopts state statutes and codes related to the construction of buildings, licensure of contractors, so that it's clear that these regulations apply to projects and work within the city. The proposed zoning ordinance amendment also defines residential rental uses and allows them as a permitted use in all zoning districts that allow residential housing. Rental properties are currently allowed in all residential districts, however, the current code does not distinguish between owner-occupied and rental housing units. The proposed ordinance amendment would add language to the zoning ordinance that has been in the Building and Construction section of city code since the 1970s. This language specifies the minimum space needs for bedrooms and living areas. The intent of these provisions is to prohibit landlords from designating a closet, attic, or garage space as a bedroom unless those spaces meet the building code standards for light, ventilation, and egress, as well as minimum floor and ceiling height requirements. The standards also regulate the maximum occupancy of the dwelling unit to make sure that all inhabitants have sufficient living space and avoid overcrowding. Okay, the next area is signage. In a recent Supreme Court case, the court determined that signage may be regulated with regard to location, manner, and duration, but not on the content or the message of the sign. This means that all signs must be regulated in the same way, and you cannot differentiate between signs based on what the sign says. The issue that this has created in River Falls relates to signs in the right-of-way. Currently, the ordinance allows temporary garage sale signs and real estate directional signs to be located in the right-of-way. The intent was to allow these signs for a limited period of time, after which they would be removed. However, since the city is not allowed to differentiate between garage sale signs, real estate signs, and any other signage, including commercial and political signs, all signs must now be allowed in the right-of-way. This has led to problems with signs being placed in unsafe or inappropriate locations. The proposed ordinance amendment would remove the provisions that allow garage and real estate signs in the right-of-way. With that change, no signs would be permitted in the right-of-way, except for required traffic signs and those that are adjacent to businesses in the downtown overlay district, such as the sandwich board that might be placed out on the sidewalk in front. All garage sale, real estate, commercial advertising, and political signs would then be required to be located on private property. Someone wanting to place a sign on property other than what they own, for example, a garage sale sign on the corner directing someone to a sale down the block, would need to get permission from that corner property owner to place a sign on that parcel. Since it's not always easy to know where the right-of-way line is, the ordinance requires that any sign be placed at least 15 feet from the curb, and this is a standard that already exists in the code for the placement of political signs. The proposed ordinance amendment also clarifies language related to flashing and moving signs, which are prohibited in some locations, and duration regulations for political signs have been removed to comply with state law. All right, the final set of amendments addresses enforcement. While it's essential that the ordinance clearly state regulations that are to be followed to achieve policy goals and ensure the health, safety, and welfare of the community, a necessary component of any ordinance are procedures for ensuring compliance with those regulations. The code enforcement manual clearly lays out the administrative procedures for staff to follow when identifying a code violation and then working with a property owner to achieve compliance. The basis for the administrative procedures must be outlined in city code and the zoning ordinance in order to clearly communicate the process and the expectations to property owners and provide the appropriate authorization for staff to carry out enforcement proceedings. The proposed zoning ordinance and city code amendments replace our current violation enforcement ordinances to add more specificity and detail and provide consistency amongst all code enforcement procedures. The code enforcement process articulated in the proposed ordinance amendments is similar to our existing process, but again, provides more clarity and certainty for current and future staff, as well as property owners and residents working to bring their property into compliance. Staff have already begun utilizing the city's e-newsletter and Facebook posts to remind residents and property owners of the needs, performance, and opportunities to dispose of unwanted items. Further, staff seeks to educate property owners when receiving complaints and when following up with properties that are not in compliance with city codes and ordinances. Staff works to help owners and residents understand the why behind ordinances and provide assistance when appropriate in locating resources to gain compliance, such as trash removal services, low-cost, or volunteer maintenance programs, and that sort of thing. The communication and outreach efforts are ongoing and will be particularly tailored when specific issues arise as common occurrences and present opportunities for education. A strong customer service approach has always been important for staff as they work to educate property owners about what may be needed and the rationale for the standards in the ordinance with a goal of ensuring that our neighborhoods are safe, healthy, and well-maintained. The code enforcement manual and the proposed ordinance amendments lay out a step-by-step process to follow to prevent, intervene, and resolve code violations. If a property achieves compliance at any time during the process, the case is closed, and no further action needs to be taken. In conclusion, the proposed zoning ordinance text amendments and the city code amendments respond to issues identified by staff and the community and prioritized by the city council related to vehicle parking and storage on residential properties, maintaining safe and healthy residential rental properties, ensuring appropriate placement and regulation of temporary signs, and outlining clear standards for addressing code violations to protect health and safety. As I noted earlier, the Plan Commission reviewed the ordinances at their meeting on July 5th and forwarded them with a favorable recommendation with the modifications discussed earlier. And then additionally, all proposed ordinances have been reviewed by the city attorney. I will now turn it back to you, Council President.
All right, thank you, and be prepared, because I got a feeling there's probably going to be some questions, so we may call on you to come back up. So at this time, we'll close the council meeting and open up a public hearing on ordinance 2022-05, ordinance amending Title 17 Zoning Code, Chapter 17.08, Section 17.08.030 and 17.08040, and Chapter 17.8, sections, section 17.80 and 020, parking standards. This is a first reading, so at this time, I would open it up for public comment. If there's anybody in the audience who has a comment to make, please come forward and sign in and let us know what you're thinking.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Chris Gonya. I live at 430 Kennedy Street, down by the high school. I'm also in collaboration with 424 Kennedy Street, which is Pat Wayne Armstrong. Their property joins mine on the west side of the property. I sent you all information regarding this in the last couple of weeks when that information came out, sent you some photos of both sides, the east and the west of my property. When I first saw this, it prompted some questions. I appreciate Emily Shively's response and some of the clarifications that she's provided. I think that's great from staff perspective, but you are the voting members that changed law in River Falls, and 15 years from now, whatever you decide now could impact decisions that are made then. That said, Agenda Item 2, page 15 of 56 in your packet, specifically Number 3, off-street parking setback and surfacing requirements. Any off-street parking area shall be no closer than five feet from the nearest side or rear lot or within 10 feet from that. As you can see in the pictures on my property, you know, I show them here, all those pictures there indicate that the neighbor on the east side is parking on the outside of my fence, which is technically right on the property line, drew a string line, put right on it. He agreed, I agreed, put it up, pulled the permit, obviously. That said, he would be in violation because he's parked within five feet of that property line. I have no problem with him parking there. I never will. I can't say that about my future neighbors 20 years from now. And city staff or zoning officials that want to interpret something that might have been decided today versus then because there wasn't clarification from the council. That said, on the west side, you can take a look at my property. It was a single-car driveway up to the garage, not adequate for anybody that has a family to try to park in front of your road. So collaboration with staff, made sure all my stormwater coming off my roof is pumped to the backyard, did all the things necessary to be up to code and to the standards and make everybody happy at the city hall. When I did that, I made a stall go off to the right side, worked with my neighbors very closely, got a property survey done, ended up bumping my fence out to about a foot from the property line, and I left a foot for my neighbor to get through there, so working nicely with the neighbors so he can get a riding lawnmower through there. That said, my driveway, the edge of my asphalt is my property line, and the rest is his. If you can look at those pictures, if you come up next to my driveway, where the driveway comes in, bumps out, continues on, and goes next to my driveway, or next to my garage, our driveways connect. We did that intentionally because if we would have left a buffer, it would allow water to get underneath there, causing heaving in the winter months because there wasn't going to be much there. So we joined those, and now we're seal coating in a joint effort to make sure we're taking care of our property. That said, it's about 10-foot a distance from the side of my garage to my property line, probably not even that, it's probably eight feet. If you get in there, you park a car there, you got enough to open up doors on both sides if I'm parked directly in that stall. So if this was not, if I wasn't quote-unquote grandfathered in, or it wasn't made in the current standards of a legally non-conforming situation 15 years from now, somebody could come back and say, "Well, you're in violation of the ordinance." So I guess what I'm asking from you is me and my neighbor, we love parking vehicles right up to the property line, we have no problem staying on our property, yes, we go over them, we don't care, but who knows what happens in the future. What I would love from you is, on that Number 3, give some clarification of what that five-foot setback says. Is that for any new? I talked to staff, and they said it was any new going forward. Anything that has been already been and put in place would be illegally non-conforming, meaning that 15 years from now, I can still use that asphalt and that parking space as I do today, even after you approve this. And then the other thing is, is when we rip up our asphalt 15 years from now, my driveway's two years old, my neighbor's probably, you know, 10 years old, we're going to have to replace the asphalt, can we legally replace that asphalt in the existing imprint, or are we going to have to bring it up to the standards and not 15 years from now be able to park there? Because that's the current standard. So staff has given the clarification that it would be legally non-conforming, meaning it's whatever we do today, we're able to do after the law's passed, but no new developments. I would just love that clarification from you, so it's set on record on a video. So 10 years, 15 years from now, I have a new neighbor, they can't say I can't do that anymore. City comes through and wants to say you can't do that, well, yeah, I can because you said so. So what I would love when you approve this next week, give some clarification to that, please.
Thank you. Anybody else have any public comment about Item Number 2? Hearing none. We will close the public hearing and reopen the council meeting, and it's a first reading, so there's no action to be taken. I guess I'd open it up if there's any feedback that the city wants to get, or the council wants to give city staff. Mr. Bierstedt?
If I could ask a question?
Sure.
And I know we've talked about this in the past, how are we going to handle all of this? Because it's an awful lot of work, it looks like. this because there's an awful lot of work it looks like of enforcement involved here, and I know the guy in the red shirt back there doesn't want to take it all on by himself. So is this in the context of talking about adding staff? I know we talked about this in the past, what we have, as far as we got.
I think there's a half of FTE ad.
Okay. Is that enough? That's my question.
Oh, is that enough? Okay. I'd call on Mr. Simpson.
Well, you will tell us. So the council has encouraged staff to take a more proactive approach to code enforcement without some kind of, you know, you don't have a scale, so you haven't, you can't say to us, well, we're at a three out of 10 now and we want you to go to an eight out of 10. So part of this is understanding what the council's willing to pass from a policy action, and then like all the other services we provide, we have to prioritize what we have for resources. So the half FTE was with the anticipation that we're creating additional code enforcement work. A half FTE is not going to remove every inoperable vehicle and take care of every couch that's unsightly, not to mention get involved in all of the housing, the rental housing, and which is, rental housing, we're fairly restricted on what we can do, so the expansiveness of that is limited, but there'll be a bunch of work at the beginning if people decide they want to pave things and do things. So I think the answer is we don't know. I mean, that's the honest answer. Half of FTE is more than nothing and should provide a reasonable level of additional hours to process these through.
So to learn-as-you-go process.
Well, I think all these are community decisions that are going to be important for you to understand, like, you know, how heavy are we going and how light are we going on things? What we've understood is the city has generally taken a more laissez-faire approach to private property and code enforcement, and the council has indicated that the community has said they want to take a more proactive approach and set some community standards around specific things. So it also depends on if everything that's in this package is approved as is. I suspect the council, there may be things you want to remove, and there might be things you want to add that we're not aware of at this point, too, so that would, that would change the level of enforcement. But whatever we do, we're going to follow due process and make sure that we're, you know, constitutionally consistent with property, private property rights, so there's, there's no quick and fast way to do code enforcement. You know, we don't call somebody up, snap our fingers, and they have, they have to comply. And you saw the graph on there, there's like 16 steps in order to preserve people's due process because you're enacting police powers where you're going onto somebody's property and directing an action of them, so we have to make sure we follow that. So I think you'll see, you've all got examples that you've provided to me of properties with specific problems. There might be a little less chasing people around. In some of the more egregious cases, we've got people essentially that move property problems from one property to another. I think the half FTE and the changes in here will more easily address those issues because I think it'll move quicker to the city attorney, which will have some, I think, some, some ability to get a judge then to look at the facts and say, listen, we all know what you're doing here, stop it, you know, issue fines and citations and other things that will do it. We have pretty good, generally, we have pretty good compliance in 6,000 properties in the city. So that's the other thing is that the half to FTE is going to primarily focus on 100 properties out of 6,000.
Going off of what Todd said and what you shared there, Scott, when you said 16 steps, the first step was a complaint. Is that what we're going to have to, is it still going to have to be a neighbor, turning in a neighbor to complain, or step one of avoid it sometimes because we're being proactive and doing it without a neighbor turning in a neighbor?
Yeah, what's proposed is not, I would say we are predominantly operating on a complaint-based system today.
Today, right.
That's not what's proposed. What's proposed is we would take a more methodical approach to, you know, first step is identifying things. So how this has happened in the past is we've identified an issue that we're seeing broadly across the community, and this isn't a specific one that we had, but there's a proliferation of couch, upholstered couches showing up on front lawns. So then staff identifies that as an issue, and then we try to take a fair and equitable approach and say, you know, so we might divide up the city in four quadrants and assign a staff person and say, this is what we're looking for. And then, you know, you're going to issue a letter, email to them saying, you may not have known that you can't put your couch out in the front yard, those are for inside, not outside, and we'll get, you know, 80% compliance or something based on that. So yes and no, you're still, we are not creating a code enforcement department of three or four employees that can daily, weekly, monthly travel every one of the addresses looking for code enforcement. That's, that's not the package that's included here. This is, this would be probably in the monthly range of proactive enforcement, and it would be on a list of one or two or three of the top things that seem to be occurring and likely would be based on historical complaints. So a lot of complaints on inoperable vehicles or, or storage of vehicles or parking of vehicles on, on the grass, especially in spring and fall, you know, where we've got mud all over the place and, and things are rutted up, so those would be more proactively approached so that the neighbor didn't have to wait to call how the city would approach.
Okay.
But it's going to be, this is not, this is not a super proactive, regular rounds. We didn't add a vehicle to the fleet, which is seri, I mean, that's a serious indication of where you're at for, for level proactive, right? They're just going to have to borrow a vehicle that we already have to do that, so it's not, we're not setting up a whole code enforcement department at current, and then the council and the community will have to indicate whether the, they're getting a satisfactory service or not.
Anybody else, Mr. Downing?
So let's say something simple as light pollution is brought up. I don't know what the level of that is, but is there not, is there a time that you would want that as an administrator for us to look at something like that or something at that level?
I, I, as the administrator, are not likely to identify issues for you that aren't already identified by a resident contact. So you would likely have been seeing complaints well before I would bring something up, just as my professional approach to code enforcement, which I think you all are aware of. So I'm probably more on the laissez-faire approach to property than most of you are and what we see from survey results. So if you're asking me as a city administrator, am I going to bring up a list of things? Probably not. Staff, through the course of their complaints and other things that they see, may be more willing to do that.
Okay. Well, we are coming into couches in the front yard season soon, so we'll see how that goes.
We talked one time about once we get all this hammered out, to send out some notification to the residents to say, here's what's going on, you obey by it, and, and so what's our, what are we looking at communicating?
I think, I think Planner Shively mentioned the newsletter and some other things, but it looks like Mr. Simpson has a comment.
Yeah, I think, again, we've seen what I would consider a high level of compliance without any actions. And then when there has been something that's been a concern or that starts to get raised in the community, I think we've had our most success where we, we identify that broadly to people and say, you know, in 2023, we'll be planning to come around looking for this, that, and the other thing, and typically by the time we're doing the proactive enforcement, you know, that, that already has been resolved by most property owners. Because there's a gen, there is, my impression of River Falls is generally there's a desire to, to be neighborly and be part of whatever the neighborhood aesthetic and, and is, but there, this is what, this is why it's a policy decision, not a staff decision, because you're, we are, in a way, you're judging whether you want to address things or not. And so you often get complaints where this is happening in my neighbor's yard and it shouldn't be happening, it's terrible, and you need to stop it. And they're pretty, they are pretty resolved that this is obviously not acceptable, and so you are determining a certain level of acceptability, and then you have to keep us accountable, the staff, when we're enforcing it, that it still matches what you expected.
Okay, I think we're going to move on here. I think, I think this is a learning process for all of us, and we'll see how it goes and make adjustments as needed. All right, we're going to close the council meeting, and we're going to move into a public hearing for ordinance 2022-06, an ordinance amending the title eight, health and safety, chapter 8.32, nuisance, nuisances generally, and this is a first reading. So during public meeting, public hearings, is there anybody who would like to comment about this topic? Anyone at all? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing and move back into the council meeting, and I would open it up for any discussion that we haven't already had in general about these. Anything, anybody have any comments?
I have kind of a.
Ms. Odean?
Yes, thank you, President. I have kind of a, a general comment, if I may address it to Mr. Simpson. Essentially, what I see us doing here is, is setting some standards. We haven't had consistent standards or sometimes standards in my experience that have addressed some of the complaints that we've gotten. So I personally see this as our opportunity to set some standards, and then enforcement is, you know, kind of like the second step of this, but just wondering if that is a fair assessment.
I, I think what the council's being asked to do, or what you asked us to present to you because that's what you wanted to do, was two things. So one, you're moving from a complaint-based system or primarily complaint-based system that relies on input from the community as to what's acceptable to them, to a more proactive where you're, you're trying to summarize what the community expectation is and then clarify, as you say, that the expectations, if, if you're going to live in this neighborhood, residential neighborhood, this is kind of the expectations for where your boat can or can't be and whether or not you can park five cars on the front lawn, that kind of thing. So that's the two things I see, and I think it, I wouldn't say that we are taking a big jump into what may be considered by some cities best practices, so it's not a very aggressive outline of exactly where your boat can be and how, you know, what the surface can be, and it's, it's kind of a River Falls approach of, we need to get a little bit better at some of our messaging as far as what we're looking for in neighborhoods. That's what I heard from the council, and I think that's what's tried to be incorporated here. And as you met, as was mentioned in the presentation, the planning commission said, well, too far, we, we don't even think you should go that far with fencing your boats or putting it in the backyard and some of those things. They wanted to start on what they thought were maybe more, more broadly accepted standards.
Okay. I mean, I, I remember, not to belabor the point, but I remember when I was on the planning commission, we took a couple of, I think it was three, three kicks at the fencing, fencing ordinance before we got that one where we wanted it. I'm not going to say right because I think there were different, different levels of right, but, you know, it's, it's an example that we're going to come back and make adjustments if we feel the need, so. All right, we're going to move on to the next one, which is, I'm going to close the city council meeting and open up a public hearing on ordinance 2022-07, an ordinance amending title 15, buildings and construction. This is a first reading. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this? Anyone at all? Okay. Hearing none, we will close the public hearing and reopen the council meeting, and if there's any more discussion about this. Seeing none, we'll move on. Next item is, we will close the city council meeting, again reopen a public hearing for ordinance number 2022-08, an ordinance amending title 17 zoning, chapters 17.04, 17.08, 17.16, 17.20, 17.24, 17.28, 17.32, 17.36, 17.40, 17.64, and 17.112. This is residential rental uses. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to this? Come forward. We already signed in, Mr. Gagne, so.
I am already signed in. Chris Gagne, 430 Kennedy Street. Something that I brought up a while back before the council and staff was what is known as quote-unquote granny flats. Let's say I want to build a garage out behind my house, and it has a separate bathroom, has a separate kitchen, but I want to have that for my in-laws, right? They retire, they want, they're going back and forth between two countries as missionaries, and they need a place to stay. Well, guess what? I have that available space. Why not build above, a garage behind my house, put a little extra unit up there as a little home for them? I think that's something that is severely underlooked at in River Falls. They wanted to do that on their own property. I think, you know, with the right regulations and oversight, that could be implemented correctly and not having a bunch of kids, you know, pack, 20 kids packed into this one house and then this granny flat, you know, have a little bit of oversight on it like you do and like you're looking at doing here today. I think that's something that you should look at under rental uses. It's one of those items that I think should come back before council and planning commission in the future. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing, reopen the city council meeting. Is there any discussion on this item?
I'd like to ask something, Emily, and you said other cities had areas that they talked about blight. How would we, and I'm not going to mention addresses, but how would we, as the city of River Falls, determine that there's blight if we can't go in to visit these or inspect these apartments or homes or dwellings?
That is a great question that I'm not going to be able to answer in full detail.
Well, do your best.
But state statute.
Emily, I think I need you to move a little closer to the microphone. In louder.
Sure. Sorry about that. Trying to find the exact section. Basically, in terms of determining an area as blight, you have to look at, okay, here it is. Evidence of blight, high rates of building code complaints or violations deteriorating property values or increases in single-family home conversions to rental units. So there has to be, and it's, so it's not like this house is blight, so now I can inspect it on a regular basis. There needs to be an area or a district designated as blighted. And then there are further restrictions still, so even if you're doing regular inspections in that blighted area, you can only inspect so often, and if there's, you know, if that violation has been addressed, then you can't inspect again for a number of years. So there's quite a bit of restrictions, even if we were to designate an area as, as targeted and blighted, so we're still kind of.
So it's not easy.
It's not easy. Yep, and there are only a handful of communities that have done this, and so we're tracking that to see, you know, if they're having some success, and maybe there are some tools that we can incorporate, or we can think about how, we can observe how they've designated their districts and how that's working, so.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Okay. Any other conversation on this one?
The only thing I might add to Mr. Gagne's comments is that accessory dwelling units are the new buzzword out there and to address affordability, which is precisely what he's referring to, so, you know, I'm not opposed to looking at something like that, but it would be very challenging.
Very challenging. In what regards?
Well, we've got, we already have limits on how many square feet, and you've got all sorts of other issues to address, and what if it's built for mom and dad, but then someday that turns into a rental unit? Now, is that zoned properly? I mean, there are all sorts of zoning issues I think that swirl around it, but it's a, it's a legitimate discussion being had in the, in the real world just because of affordability.
No. Okay. All right. All right. We're going to move on to the next one. Close the city council meeting, open up a public hearing on ordinance 2022-09. The ordinance amending Title 17, Title 17 Zoning, Chapter 17.68, Section 17.68.100.C, .19.B. The mayor owes me for this one because there's a lot of reading here. And Chapter 17.84, Section 17.84-010, 17.84.020, 17.84.030.B.3, 17.84.030.7.2 and 6 and 7. And the last one, 17.84.050 signs. Is there anybody in the, in the council chambers that would like to speak to this one? Anyone at all? Okay. Hearing none. We will close the public hearing and move back into the city council meeting. Anybody want to talk about this one? I personally like this one.
I, I, I think that the number of things that are being changed shows that some coordination as to where our assigned ordinance is, is probably a good idea.
I agree. Anybody else? All right. So here's the theme. Here comes the next one. We're going to close the city council meeting, and we're going to open up a public hearing on ordinance 2022-10. An ordinance amending Title 17 Zoning, Chapter 17.104, Section 17.104.060. Violations, penalties, and enforcement. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this topic? Okay. Not hearing any. We will close the public hearing and open up the, reopen the council meeting. And is there any discussion from the council on this one? All right. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. O'Dean, go ahead.
Yes, actually, if, uh, this is probably for Ms. Shively. Is it possible to have something indicating, you know, that things are grandfathered in? You know, that you are expected to comply when you're, you know, doing certain things, you're expected to comply with the code that was in effect when you're doing it? I, too, have a driveway right up next to the property line.
Sure. So whenever an ordinance changes, that kind of sets like the date from this day forward. These are the regulations that exist for anything that is new. So anything in existing, in existence prior to that date is allowed to remain because it was installed under the previous regulations.
So that's just the law?
Yep. It's considered to be legal. And then what was mentioned earlier during the public hearing on the paving portion is it's allowed to remain, and you are allowed to maintain and replace, so.
Great. I just wanted to clarify that that's built into it. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. One item on the consent agenda, resolution approving 2020, 2022 Chip Seal Project. Adopting the resolution would authorize staff to retain St. Croix County to perform the 2022 Chip Seal Program at an estimated cost of $190,000. Anybody want to pull this one or?
I want to approve it.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Bjork, a second by Ms. O'Dean. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. We're going to move into announcements. The mayor has asked us to look kindly upon his appointment, reappointment of Wayne Rowan through July 2025 to the library board.
I move a motion. I move approval of the mayor's appointment.
All right.
Second.
Downing, O'Dean. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Okay. Administrator's report, Mr. Simpson. I'll turn it over to you.
Well, thanks, counsel, for the discussion. Staff are happy to answer additional questions that might come up regarding the ordinances. It's, it's quite, quite the amount of changes to the current, current operation. So I don't, I don't want to downplay in my comments about how we're not going too heavy or whatever. It's a substantial change to the, to the ordinances of the city. I want to mention border review is Tuesday, August 16th at 4:00. We do need a quorum of council to be present for that. If you are not able to attend at that date, just please let us know so we can make sure we have enough. Customer service event this year is being held from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. here at the plaza outside of City Hall. That's on Thursday, August 18th. We look forward to inviting our, our neighbors to join us for a meal on August 18th from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. The next cookout conversations with the mayor and council is Thursday, August 25th. Thursday, August 25th from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. That'll be at the Glen Park Pavilion. I do want to mention that the council approved the Chip Seal Program moments ago. We expect that will start as soon as Monday, so that's not a lot of notice. But we're, we're kind of wait, we always have to wait for the county to tell us when they're prepared to do it. And obviously, they have to wait for us to give them a map and all the things related to the Chip Seal Program. Understand it's a big disturbance to neighborhoods. There's a significant amount of chip seal that's going to be occurring, including my own neighborhood. And so we just ask people to be patient as, as best we can. It's the reason why River Falls streets are better than other city streets.
Always a fan favorite.
Because it's, it's a pretty intensive preventative maintenance effort. It can make, it can be messy, but the results have been pretty, pretty successful for us.
Scott, again, can you arm us with some information when we get comments from the public? It extends the life of the roads by.
Oh, so we operate on a 70-year road maintenance plan. So we're getting probably 14 to 20 years extension from those kind of.
From the chip sealing act, too?
From the activity.
Okay.
It's intended, obviously, to give, to give an additional layer of road pavement, but it's primarily to reduce the infiltration of water into the pavement, which is our biggest enemy. So, and there's other people much more prepared to give you more details if that's what you'd like. But I was a skeptic, but I've, you know, spent my time now here in River Falls, and I think the results are pretty, pretty substantial.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Simpson about the minister's report? All right. Hearing none. We're going to move into closed session. We're going to recess into closed session per Wisconsin State Statute 19.851E for the following purposes. Deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conducting other specific public business whenever competitive or bargaining requirements or reasons require a closed session to wit North Main Street property. And we will need a roll call on this, please.
Did we have a first and second?
Make a motion to move into closed session.
Mr. Downing. Yep. Second. All right. Now we need a roll call.
O'Dean?
Yes.
Downing?
Yes.
More set.